Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second?
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, have you all had a chance to look over the agenda for tonight? See, we have a couple additions.
Just the one.
Just thirteen Cs, the only addition.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve them as written.
Second?
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Anybody have any identifying conflicts of interest for tonight? Hearing none. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Jason?
Jason Lucky 309 East Craig, Emergency Manager and Chief Police. Just want to take quick time to do a public service announcement to everybody who's watching and update the council. We're still asking for all parties who are affected. Either it's just a little bit of water in your basement or total catastrophe with your house, we need all reporting done. Please bear with us, we have one person answering one phone line for this and so it may take some time to get through. They can also get through by emailing the form on Tracy Minnesota. It's TracyMN.org, you'll find the forms on the city webpage and they can fill those out and turn those in. If they do make the phone call and get through, it only takes about two to three minutes to just ask some simple questions. I've tried to, seen on the news that I put out a warning about scammers. Apparently a couple of people in town have had phone calls apparently from FEMA. Sure that they're total scams, asking for money and whatnot. Other contractors that nobody's heard of have asked for money upfront to come in and clean. So, warn for the victims over flooding. Not default prey to scammers who are looking for money upfront. Use local contractors, use people and companies that they're familiar with and heard advertising from in the past. If people come to your door looking to help, make sure that they have a business card or in attire that represents their company. Look at the vehicle they're driving and make sure it has markings on it that represents the company they're driving. As of today, eighty residents have already reported damage out of the nine hundred utility bills that we send out. That's just after today and two hours on Friday. So, people are calling in and we are taking information. Approximately eight businesses have reported so far. We've handed out over a hundred and sixty Red Cross cleanup kits, a bucket to seal in the hallway. I shared, we received a shipment of four hundred from the Red Cross on Saturday morning. I shared a hundred of these with Murray County Sheriff's Office and fifty more today with the Lyon County Sheriff's Department. We're going to continue our dump site today. I believe the numbers we've hauled so far with Thursday, Friday, Saturday was over three hundred and fifty thousand pounds of debris. This will continue Thursday, noon to seven, and Friday, nine to three. If you're in need of volunteers for Thursday and Friday to get stuff out or get stuff hauled, Pam is working our volunteer hotline and so give Pam a call, her number's on her Facebook page.
Could you give us those numbers for people that, a few people that aren't on Facebook, if they're watching?
Pam's number?
That one and the number that they should call for the damages.
The number for the damages is a police department number and it's six-two-nine-five-five-three-four. And Pam, I don't have your number handy, you want to tell me which one you want to call?
Six-two-six?
Six-two-six.
Oh-five-seven-two.
Oh-five-seven-two.
And that is if they're looking for people to help.
Either people, either people are willing to volunteer or people that need volunteers.
And we have a couple volunteer organizations that want to come in on Thursday and help, but if we don't have anybody pre-arranged for them to come to town and help, I'm not going to ask them to come to town if we don't have anybody lined up for them. Also, I'd like to take a quick moment and shout out a couple thank yous. First off to the Tracy Fire Department, ambulance and Public Works employees. Their level of dedication to the city was astounding. Answering the call and working long hours, knowing that their own properties were flooded and what they had to go home to was pure dedication by these people. Also want to thank Dale Johnson III and Shane Daniels for being great leaders and working hard together. The Fire Department and Public Works work very well as a team. This is the reason we still have a grocery store in this town and still have a gas station that people can use and frequent. If it wasn't for the strong efforts of these two leaders, we probably wouldn't have these two businesses in operation today. I also need to thank all the other fire departments that came and helped and answered the call, Garvin Fire Department, Belton Fire Department, Marshall Fire Department and Walnut Grove Fire Department for the mutual aid that they provided over the week. Also, I'd like to thank C&amp;B Equipment for the use of their tractors. St. James, the city of, provided us with pumps. Southwest Sanitation put us high on their list to help haul all this garbage and debris. Lyon County Landfill for extending their hours. NPL out of Lakeville, they helped us out during the flooding. Record Construction from Adrian assisted us with pumps. Midwest Contractors assisted us with pumps. To haul the people who donated food and water and for the working firemen, Kendall Corman and Lyle Newman for all their hauling and for the, to the citizens of Tracy for being patient. I know there were some calls I didn't get to during that day. People called 911 and said their basements were flooding and, and there's just a few of them that I just didn't get to respond to that. Everybody's basements were flooding at that time and I just couldn't make all those calls. So, thank you for being patient. This is going to be a long recovery and I hope the patience continues. This was bad, but it could have been a lot worse. So, any questions that you guys have for me right now on the continued efforts we're doing?
I just want to say, you know, to emphasize what you said because they did an amazing job, every one of them, including the Fire Department. So, thank you for yours too, but the Fire Department, the Police Department, they were all, the city, they were all great. The citizens that stepped up to help, everybody was great through this whole thing. So, thank you all.
I just have one more quick thing. Dale Johnson reside at 337 Third Street in Tracy. For the people, the community and mainly for the council to know, I believe it was Chris's seventh day of employment at the city. He technically wasn't supposed to start at eight. I believe the first time I saw him was quarter to seven, downpouring rain, working on a pump, pumping sewage in full turnout gear because it was raining so hard. Through the entire process, and again, everything Jason said, I agree with a hundred percent. The one loop in there that I want to add is Jason himself and his crew did an amazing job. Shane, the fireman, and again, Chris in that loop. The four of us in three days, we spent maybe two hours together at random times. All four of us knew what the other one was doing and if something needed to be done, it was done. And like I said, at seven o'clock in the morning to have your city administrator standing next to a manhole trying to fix a pump was totally impressive.
In fact, I think he was there on Fourth of July too, weren't you?
He was in the, he was in the office all day on the Fourth of July. So, and all the way through the weekend, majority of the weekend, so.
My stuff is kind of trivial compared to that, but they did do a great job. Reason I'm here is, well, I sent all you folks a letter trying to reiterate what Dr. Brown was trying to say at the last meeting. Some of these things that are going on with, you know, the, I liked his terminology as character assassinations against, against Bill and Tony and I just thought, well, Tonys went nowhere with the, with the recall, but I thought you guys would like to know how Bill became our agent for handling the contracts with the, with the health insurance on Tracy. So, if you want to blame it on somebody, you can blame it on me, which I stated in that letter, but anyway, the biggest thing I think that you folks need to do and your charter commission is give some kind of basis for wanting to increase this council size again. You know, it's kind of a slap in the face to those people that worked to reduce it and, and now you want to turn around and increase it again, but I haven't seen any, any kind of a study to see how many people have, have councils as big as seven anymore. And if they do, they're usually representing wards or precincts throughout the city. And that's what Tracy's was the leftover from, I think, from back in the seventies is why we had a council size of seven and it was finally reduced in 2011. And I think you guys and the Charter, Charter Commission need to do a little more research on that. But that's all I got to say. If you guys have any questions, I'm here.
It's a little wild yet.
Anybody else want to talk about anything that's not on the agenda? I don't have your question today. So, we will go into the Charter Commission request of recommendation for council representation at the next Charter Commission meeting on July 25th to discuss Tracy's role in the hospital board.
So, what that is, is we are working on boards. Our last charter meeting, the library board came with their updated board recommendations and it was wonderful that they had worked it all out. They had a committee put together and they did a great job. We're still already confused on what our role is with this hospital board and so therefore we're asking that the council appoint somebody to come to our next charter meeting. We can figure out how to go forward with what our role is with the hospital advisory and just go from there. So, that's the request. Do we need to just take it out of the charter? Do we, what do we do? So, that's what we're asking.
That is a good question.
The reason was in the charter is because the, going back to the history, like Dave said, is because the city used to own the hospital. So, they had no choice. The city doesn't own the hospital any longer. Part of the agreement in the sale of the hospital was that Sanford would maintain a hospital advisory board made up of members from all the communities served. The city has no dog in that fight and the previous mayor said he would like to stay on it, but he didn't have to stay on it as a council member, he'd been a community member. So, I think in my mind, it should be up to the hospital to find their board members and they only meet once a quarter.
Yeah, like I'm on that board.
Okay.
But, I mean, not having the whole background of the whole thing, I really don't know the answer to that. So, and like Tony said, we haven't met for a while, but we can, to be honest.
The desire is that somebody from the city council or from the city.
Continue.
Continue on there just to stay in the know so that the citizens, if they had questions and everything, that the council people wanted to be able to speak now and go about it.
Then to answer your question, Rosemary is to reduce it from two council members to one.
Okay, but that still needs to be reflected in our charter.
Right.
So, we need, we were asking for maybe if you could come to that meeting on the 25th and we can get that language into the charter correctly is what's the request.
I kind of looked at my schedule for that.
Okay, that would be great.
Volunteer to be on there because I figured it probably made the most sense.
Right.
And I just have one meeting I have to try to switch around that I have at 10:30, but I think I'll be able to do it.
If you come at 10, we can make sure you're first and then you can.
Okay.
How about we do it that way and then you're not switching anything around?
One thing to consider is that we do have the Tracy Med Center Trust Fund that the city still manages as well that goes along with that.
See, so that's why it's so confusing. We need some real clear guidelines.
The part of the sale was the, the hospital would request from the council for a project and the funding sources, then we'd release the money to them, funding sources.
When Sanford bought the facility, there is a plan laid out as to what capital projects needed to be done at the hospital and that's what this would be spent on. So, as the hospital does those projects, then they would bring forward to get the money out of this fund.
That'd be a council decision.
I mean, more or less in this, yeah, because in the sale, it was more or less conditioned.
Yep.
Good.
It was stated too that the council would control those funds.
Yep.
Based upon the request by the hospitals.
Make sure it was being spent on the right things.
Okay.
But you can trust me.
So, the thing of it is, is we need all that reflected in the, in the new language. So, that would be.
Yep, I will volunteer to, to be the person.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to stay up here for the next one? Yeah, for the next one. Okay. So, then we're asking the council to direct the rest of the boards to update their information so we can have all the updated and correct board guidelines in our charter. So, at the end of the year, when we do our yearly report and do our legal work, it can all be done in one and we can all be up to date. And we're targeting October of this year that these boards would have their information into us. If it goes like the library board, that was phenomenal. They had it in and it was just done. They finished just a couple of things, so that's our little spiel. So, however we would move forward from that, Chris, we would direct the boards to have their stuff into us.
I can send a notification to the board. So, with.
That'll be good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, we have the John Deere lawnmower.
So, Shane's not here, but I talked to him quite a bit about it. He, as part of his equipment budget, he's been searching out for a lawnmower and he happened to come across one that matches similar to what he already has for one of his. And it's used but very low hours and quite a substantial discount as you can see in the memo that he sent. It does fall under total wise, the amount necessary for council approval, but if you start with the starting amount, it's over approval. So, he wanted to run it past you and have you vote on it for that reason, but with the trade-in, it actually ends up being thirteen thousand five hundred and knew that machine is well over thirty thousand, or thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, it's a pretty good cost savings.
Just for the record, I'd make a motion to allow them to purchase the one from C&amp;B Enterprises for thirteen-five.
Can I add that it, it also involves trading in one that we have too? So, that needs to be approved as well and part of it.
I'd add that to the motion to complete the deal as written here.
I'll second that. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries? Then we have set public hearing for the Phase Three for July 23rd. Chris?
Thanks. And I just want to say that the event last week was incredible. I've heard nothing but great things about city staff and everything too, so I empathize. I've cleaned out sewage out of a basement too, so I empathize with a lot of people out there. So, this agenda item is just one of those rural development boxes we have to check. It's a public hearing on the Phase Three project. It's not the same as part of the statute 429 process. That's where we'll go into more detail. And I guess that, if you wish, we could go into more detail on the 23rd, but there aren't any real stringent guidelines on what you have to say and what, what needs to be discussed. It just needs to kind of give an overview of the project and let people speak about it. So, that's what would be on the 23rd. And then, end of the month is when rural development needs to obligate their funding, so we're, we're getting down to the, the end here, but they've kept reassuring us that they're on top of what they need to do and we have everything submitted to them. So, that's what that agenda item is for.
And through this process, Chris, would we look at any, any type of shovel in the ground until 2019?
Right.
Or beyond?
2019 and beyond, I would say, is the goal. So, council has authorized us at two different times to kind of start working on survey and geotech reports, televising. So, hopefully, you know, we'll get the obligated, the funds obligated at the end of the month here, or the first week of August and then, then we can actually be authorized, you know, formally to go forward with it. I feel that we'll be able to be in the ground in 2019 with the first, we'll call it a sub-phase of Phase Three. We foresee this being split into four construction contracts, what we're asking for. So, the first one will probably be 2019 and my understanding is the money does need to be spent by end of July 2021. So, the other three contracts, maybe one can be awarded fall of 19 and then the other two would probably be 2020 and then finish wrapping up in early 2021.
Looking more towards how we balance out our debt before we go into more debt. I mean, I think was it the next bond to be paid off is in 2020, if I remember right from the audit?
Oh. And there are, we've done it before with other communities and I'm sure Eilers has done it, but we've structured bonds, I shouldn't say we, but the cities and their financial advisors have structured bonds where the, the payments are quite a bit less those first couple of years and then once other debt comes off, you know, they, they kind of.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't everybody's mind that we think about that before we pull the trigger on this and.
Yeah.
Because we kind of got our hands slapped in this last audit.
Oh.
With the amount of debt we're carrying for these projects. And.
Sure.
There's no argument that it needs to be done. It's just we got to keep an eye on how we're going to pay for it.
Sure, sure.
How's all your survey going, surveying going lately?
Good, good. We have, we, we were only doing that first Phase Three A, which is basically Third Street and the one block in each direction, basically. So, we're pretty much wrapped up with that. And then, I believe, maybe Andy, you've probably talked to Empire more recently than I have about the private service televising. Okay. But they're getting, getting appointments and they've done what they can doing the lateral launch from the main up services and then it's a matter of getting access into people's homes to.
Have they contacted everybody that they need to get into their house and go from the house out?
Yeah, I believe they've sent letters and probably door hangers, I think, is one of their methods, so it's just a matter of catching people and we provided the phone numbers that we knew over the city knew of too, so. Yeah, things are, I think if we get things obligated in the first week of August, we'll be in a good position for that Phase Three A, anyway, to get in the ground in 19.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public hearings on that date on the 23rd?
I think we do.
One other one.
That sale, so. I'd say 6:50, that EDA one isn't going to take very long. I'd make a motion then to, to do the public hearing for Phase Three for July 23rd at 6:55.
The notice was, will be published or maybe it hasn't gone out yet?
I think we could edit it, but it was set for seven to get enough time. That's okay.
There's plenty to kill time in it, so.
I'd second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Resolution 2018-32, ordinance amending section 2.1, 2.03 of the Charter of the City of Tracy, cancel.
Do you want an explanation on that?
Sure.
So, I got further clarification from the city attorney on that and that was the one with the wording unanimous and, and everybody was uncomfortable and uneasy. So, he wants that one to be disapproved and canceled so that you can move on to what will be 2018-35 and that one takes a four pence vote. So, it's, and it's not unanimous and it's worded, it's a little more comfortable to read.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I'd make a motion to cancel resolution number 2018-32.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries? Do we want to do 2018-35? Do you want to do them in order?
I think so, Devers, whichever way you want.
I'll also do that one.
You're the boss.
Pardon me?
You're the boss.
Yeah, here. Let's do that one too, the 2018-35, the new amended section 2.03 of this Tracy City Charter.
And if I read that correctly, it's just more or less saying that we are going to send it to the voters again.
If this one's passed, it will go to the vote, it will go on the ballot.
I will make the motion that we accept resolution 2018-35 to allow it to go to the voters so we can move forward with this issue and.
Second?
First and second, any discussion?
I still like question like with what Dave said tonight. And I asked that, like we were talking about too, it's like, why? Why do we need seven?
I'm not saying if I agree with increasing it to the seven versus from the five, but if we don't approve this, they will then, the Charter Commission feels strongly enough they have voice that they will then do a petition to get it on the ballot anyways. I'm maybe being a little stubborn myself because I don't like these darn petitions. Now, I still like to do something different now, I don't know if that's something we can do with the charter or not, or if that's the state law as to how people can do petitions to get around the council, but right now, there's nothing we can do. They can do a petition and I think, what did Matt say they needed? Thirty? Thirty signatures? I mean, it's very minimal signatures. So, I guess I'm just being a little stubborn myself, just saying I don't want to deal with petitions.
I agree, but then I, I was talking to somebody too and their comment was, well, if they can get a petition to force it on, can we get a petition to force it off? That, that was their, that was their question. It's like if we're going to do a petition to put it on, can we, one says you can't, you can't put it on.
It's a legitimate question and I guess what I'm going to say is I want us to start acting like adults that can play in a sandbox together and we need to work as a community and so right now, we need to go to the voters. Like I questioned earlier, okay, so what's going to stop in two years? Somebody.
The yo-yo effect.
Yep. Bringing it forward to have it, if it passes or not passes, to have it go on the voters again. I like to see what we can do as far as something like that legally, like how many times, how frequently can something be brought to the, the table before it's like, okay, accept the loss? We're Tracy Minnesota, we voted, we're done with this issue, quit bringing it forward to us.
Either that or some, some type of justification to resurface it where this was brought up with no justification.
But right. Can I comment to that? That is not true. It was brought up with, with justification.
Just wait, remember, you got to get to the.
I am. It was brought up with justification. Nine people who don't agree on a lot of things, all unanimously agreed that what we're seeing in our council right now is diversity and that is what we think will keep us from running into problems like we did before with the recall. That was exactly why we did it. Nine people unanimously decided that. Nine people unanimously decided that.
I know of thirty that would sign one saying, we don't need it. That's my point, Rosemary. You, I could pick nine people and have them agree on anything that they all want to agree on, but what's the purpose? What's the justification?
The justification is, is that there would be more representation from the community and less possibility of the council becoming skewed, because people felt that the council was skewed.
I think what he's saying is factual. These are feelings.
Yeah, we need to get them, stick to the facts instead of the emotions.
Okay, the facts are before...
There's nothing factual about it.
The facts are before people felt that the city was better represented when there was seven, when there were six people on the council. And that was exactly the reason why they brought it forward. Nine people unanimously decided that.
I understand that, but at that time, it was decided by a lot more people that seven was too many and five is the number. That was a two-to-one swing. And that's why, and I've said this since it brought up, I'm going to vote against this no matter what, because that's what I'm going to do in the ballot box on it. And I think Dave Spencer's point is, we just can't keep on Jerry's. We just can't keep beating the drum until we get our way. It just...
Okay, and we're going to be, I'm going to be crystal clear about the fact that nobody in that charter was, there was no character assassination, there was nobody's names brought up. There was nothing like that in that charter committee. You can go back and look through the minutes.
Nobody said there was, Rosemary.
Yeah, there was. It's been stated twice up here.
Not about the commission, but whatever.
It's been stated twice that that was the reason why, that this was asked to be increased, and that is not the case. People felt like there was a better representation before, that the city was better represented, and they're very happy with the diversity. They want more diversity.
That's what I'm saying right now. We need to put it to the voters.
Exactly.
I just want to make sure this does not keep coming back every two to four years. And how we can do that, I'm not so sure, and I hate to be paying legal fees all the time for us to figure out how we can play as adults together here. But I don't, I don't want this brought back either way.
Exactly.
If it passes or it fails, I don't want it brought back to this council by the charter commission or by the public, by a petition in two years when we have another vote. Or worse yet, one year, when now we'd have to pay out money for a special election like we had to do for the recall.
Or six years.
I don't, I don't want that. So how we can try to get that assurance?
I don't know that you...
I'm not sure, and I think that's what we need to look at. No matter what the vote is, I want it clear beforehand, what is the assurance that this isn't going to keep coming up?
I don't think there is any insurance that that will not keep coming up. I think that you have, you have to let the people speak.
And they did in 2011.
Right, well, they're speaking again to this, to this charter commission. There's nine people on that charter, David, nine of them. They all unanimously came up the same thing.
I'll go out and find nine people tonight that'll go, we don't want it. I mean, I already had dozen of them telling me, it's like, can we...
Yeah, but that was based, that was based on...
No, can we, they said, can we do a petition to not allow it on, or I said, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't know the answer to that either. Then they, as voters, have the right to do that. Maybe this will keep going around and around. I have no idea, but...
Okay, so that we don't keep going round and round tonight?
Right.
I think what Jerry said is like, you need to let it come to the voters.
Right.
Because if they don't want it, like you hear all these people saying they don't, then there should be a problem, and it's not going to pass.
Right, it'll come to the ballot box.
You know, so, but like Jerry said, we do need to find out from Matt, or how we make sure that it, you know, once this...
It's a state statute.
It's a statute.
You can never get around it. It can always go back and forth.
Right.
But to facilitate it, I mean, to make it easier, isn't always the answer. And I agree with your point, I don't want to have to pay for another special election for it. But who's to say, it gets on the ballot, it don't pass, they could petition again, starting one December, to run a special election for it, and it fails, and they could petition again.
Right.
So...
That's why I'm looking her in the eye, saying, what can we do here to make sure this isn't going to come back? Because you're the charter commission. They're not looking you as a person.
No, right.
I'm looking at you as the chairman of the charter commission.
I would say very likely the charter commission is going to accept that, but then they're telling me there's all kinds of other people that probably wouldn't accept that. So I can't dictate past, I can't tell you, past the charter, what's going to happen.
I guess what I'm asking you is, as president of the charter...
Chairman.
Chairman of the charter, is this going to be brought back if it doesn't go with how the commission wants it?
That would be up to the other eight members.
You're not giving me any assurance.
Well, I can't assure you that I can quiet the voters.
But you continue to talk about the nine of you unanimously voted this.
They voted that, on that, right. They felt that strongly about it.
I think you know how strongly they feel, and you've talked to them enough. What's your gut telling you? Would they abide by what the voters say?
I would think they would abide by what the voters would say, and I think that would be what we would come to.
That's what I'm asking.
But then, there's, that doesn't mean that other voter groups can't come up and decide what they want to do.
No, I understand you can't speak for the...
Right.
2,500 residents in town here.
Right.
But I guess right now, I'm looking at you for assurance.
Right.
Because you're bringing this forward.
I am bringing this forward as the charter.
Yes.
And this only had to do with the fact that the charter wanted to have diversity, so they didn't feel like there was ever another situation like we had, and there was nothing to do with character assassinations. There was nothing to do with anybody's personalities. The minutes are there to be read. Okay?
So I will continue with my motion.
That was a motion, second.
Yep. Do I need to re-say it?
No, you made a motion, he seconded it.
You ask if there's any more discussion?
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
No call?
Yep.
Aye.
Tao?
Aye.
Corman?
Aye.
Peterson?
Nope.
Teague?
Aye.
Passes on four to five.
Okay, we will go to the consent, the consent calendar?
No, we've got to go back to B.
Did I miss the election?
B.
Okay, let's do resolution 2018-34, appoint election judges for the primary election, August 14th.
I'll look great to me, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
First and second, Devon's listening. Any, shepers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we do the consent calendar.
I'd make a motion to do the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, the planning commission minutes, and the Tracy Relief Association minutes.
Second. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now can we have somebody do that, most municipal accounts payable with breakthrough beverage?
So moved.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have the land purchase proposal from Rosemary.
It's really not a purchase, it's a easement for easement, as I understand it. I went back and did find the easement on that property, it's dated December 12, 1968, and it was for a municipal parking lot, and it is not presently being used as a municipal parking lot. And per my legal advise, the easement is now negated for that purpose, that the city is not using it for what it originally obtained the easement for. So it's presently being used as an alleyway. So I talked to Chris, and we proposed that I have easement of the blue section there for parking, and that the city continue to use my property that I pay taxes on for the alleyway. So that's the proposal.
Have you verified that easement? It is, it does state that it's for municipal parking. I did talk to both League of Minnesota Cities and Matt about it a little bit. It's a messy deal. It could be, it could go one way or the other, as far as if you wanted to fight it and try and keep it, or whatever it's, so it's...
And it could be construed that it'd be for ingress and egress for the municipal parking. That's how vague that easement currently is written. So I don't know if you'd really call it a violation or, but that's...
I don't want to make this a messy deal, and that's not the whole idea behind this. I'm paying taxes on something for the city to be able to use as an emergency egress to get through there, and I support that. But in return for that tit-for-tat, I would like to have a place that I can say my people can park and have no problems with being towed, or I can put up my own signs that says this is for their parking only. That's the trade-off.
So what you're requesting is the blue square?
Right.
In exchange for us having that red?
Another 99-year easement.
Well, I'd make a motion to offer a conditional use easement for that blue square. The condition is, if that property that it sits on is sold, that the easement is no longer valid.
Then I'm not going to do that. It has to be tit-for-tat. I have to have protection for my people to park for the full term of the easement.
I'll finish my motion later then.
How many cars does that spot hold?
Two. Or I could take my easement back, and I could put parking in all along there for all of it. Either way.
Okay, so can we, instead of the 99 years?
Mm-hmm.
Would we, I'm just trying to think how we could use it. You know, Tony said to do it as long as...
As long as the city owns the property, the easement would be valid, would be valid if that property was ever sold, and you would have the right to first refusal. What I was trying to say before I was interrupted is part of my motion. And then, if you wanted that land to be yours, you could buy it instead of parceling it out. But that's, that was my intent.
Would you set an amount on that now? Would you set an amount to that now, a nominal fee type thing?
Yeah.
Okay? Because the city is essentially getting full use of this property for nothing. I'm paying the taxes on it.
Well, but the city is paying for all your snow removal in that alley, and they've never been built to that property yet. So there is...
Exactly, no, they do the whole alley, all the way through to everybody.
That's what I said.
Right.
No one's getting billed for it, because those easements run along the same way. It's never been built for those alley clears.
Just the alley clearance, but I pay for my own snow removal, and so does everybody else.
On the side, yeah, but anyway.
Could we do it that, that we would do this easement as long as that property is being used for apartment buildings?
That, that works for me. Yeah, that's what I need.
What you need it for is for your apartments.
Right. I could go along with that.
That, and it changed ownership for whatever reason, that this easement...
Or that it became no longer an apartment building for whatever reason.
Yes.
Because I would want my next assignees, as this says, to be able to have that same ability, to have parking there.
To me, I think it makes sense versus that, versus closing the alley.
Right. I don't think we want to close the alley. I'll, I'll tell you why I'm a little hesitant. I mean, I'm the one that suggested this little square part.
Right.
I mean, the only reason I'm hesitant is I've had people come to me as a council person, which I encourage people to come talk to me. Yeah, it's what I want, I'm representing them. That they're like, you know, what are you going to do if more and more people want to turn those apart, the upstairs of a lot of those buildings back into apartments? Are you going to be sitting there giving off little pieces of land for everybody to have parking for their tenants?
I would say you would send up a big hooray, because if people are going to put apartments in there, and those buildings don't become green space, that would be, yeah, I think the city should embrace looking at, working with those people.
What I would want that would be different with this one is because we have this easement here with you.
Right.
If someone did these apartments over here, we don't have an easement...
No.
...with them, so...
But definitely.
Right now, you're saying you will let us play nice in the sandbox.
Right.
You'll let us use this piece of property if we let you use that.
Piece of property for as long as it is used as apartments.
But are there, are there any easements up here?
Yep.
I mean, because this is considered an alleyway, basically going straight across through here, too. So you'd end up, you're going to end up with the same issue down the road, too, because somebody's paying for...
To make it simpler, to go along with what you brought up, Jerry, let them park any municipal parking lot, and when they clear a way out, they can clear that parking lot last, instead of first.
You mean for the other problems?
It's off-street parking, it's a municipal lot, everybody can use it. It's 20 steps further than where you're at now, where you're, where you're trying to park, it's just across the alleyway there.
No, no, to be clear, Tony, I'm only interested in trading. I'm hoping that you would work that out for other people, though, because we do need people to buy those buildings and put apartments in there.
I thought the initial issue was off-street parking for your tenants. I didn't realize it was a this-for-that agreement.
Well, the city is getting my, I am paying taxes on that for people, for the city to use. So I'm asking, did I be granted an easement for me to use for my parking? And that other side, I sure hope that you look at that for the next person that comes along and decides to put apartments in. I'm hoping that's how you deal with them, so that the people are encouraged to do the same thing that I'm doing, making something out of those buildings downtown, so they don't become expensive green space.
You got any renters yet?
Yes.
That building's occupied?
That building will be occupied this weekend for the downstairs.
Sufficient parking for the time being?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to table it until, do some more looking.
What are we looking at?
Figuring out how to make it work.
Yep.
You know, I would second that motion if it's not pushed out so far. I think now that we have this, because we do not have the information concerning the easements and everything, that I'd want to give it a little more thought than just a quick decision here, so I'd like to table it.
Okay.
With you understanding that doesn't mean it's a no.
Okay.
That give us a little time to...
We need to look at all the other easements along the backside and find out how that was laid out.
This decision will affect potential decisions.
Right.
Like I said, if people do the other apartments.
Right.
Totally agree with you. I think the more apartments we can get here, because we've always said housing is a concern.
Right.
But give us a little time to get our ducks in a row.
Okay.
Since it's not winter quite yet.
Right.
They can park up front or right behind your building for now and not...
Yep.
Have to worry about being towed or getting a ticket.
Well, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I will second your, your motion to, to table it at this time.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have the utility rate discussion.
So you, last meeting, you asked me about to look up the software for League of Minnesota Cities. I got with one of their IT techs, there is nothing that the League of Minnesota Cities provides. They suggested that I use one of their communication chat window type things to reach out to other cities and try and find some. Truthfully, Tuesday hit, and I haven't gotten there.
I was surprised just to see this, and I'm grateful.
But you did ask about what the differences were. So we polled the last, or three months in October, or in 2017. And I'm sorry, it didn't show as number-wise on here, but August was 79,00928. September was 89,754. And October was 95,577. And then the bottom graph shows first and second quarter comparisons. For 2017, it was 469,519. And for 2018, it was 541,132. So it was impactful. I just don't know if it was what you were looking for.
Well, it's, it's nice to see this trend in the right direction. We just need to know how far to go. That software, it was at a league meeting, and they were touting it in a beta version, and I can't remember what company was there. It wasn't the league itself. There was a company that the league allowed, and that's been, gee, that's got to be six years ago.
I have an email out to Sourcewell, which used to be National Giant Powers Alliance out of Staples. They do a lot of research on stuff like that, too, and mostly for the reason of selling it and power buying. So I'm waiting to hear back from that as well. Trying to find something to present you.
Forecasting-type deal, so we got an idea. We could pick up $1,000 a piece of software versus $18,000, I think it's. But that being said, and we're closing in on a year since we raised the rates last, and we now, we know we have an impact, and it's going in the right direction. I don't know. We need to come up with a number to bump it up again for this year.
Did we do a percentage last time?
I'm trying to remember how it would have worked out, because she gave us three options, and the numbers all jumbled together, so I took the high one.
On the base? Yeah, I think on the base, it was a flat increase. And on the usage, it was a percentage of, I want to say 25.
It was an odd number, 20. It wound up jumping everybody's bill up about 25%, but that, but the basis, we kicked the base up because we definitely needed it there.
Yeah.
But the other rates, I'd have to go back and dig through my stuff.
I'd say, or can you just dig that up, what we did last time? Because then we can see how much we've gone up, and we can see if that amount coming through, if we did the exact same thing, and then how many people that would affect on like their base, the bases, too. And then we could see, figure out the average water bill, it's going to go up $4 or $16 or whatever.
The last bumped one up about 25 bucks.
Yeah, so I mean, we can, we can get a better handle on where we'd be.
So to be clear for the next meeting, you'd like me to try and find a software that can do some forecasting for us?
If it's possible, yeah.
And you'd like to know what the last increase was?
Yeah.
Whether it was base or percentage or?
Yep, exactly how we did it, and then we can go back and revisit that again.
Okay.
I mean, just shooting, based on what I've seen here with the numbers, just shooting from the hip, I'd say if we bumped it up again this August, at half of what we did last time, we're still going to be turning in the right direction, and it's not going to be such a large jump on anybody. So, I mean, we picked up just roughly.
60,000?
$60,000. I know that's nowhere close to what the debt load is, but it's better than what we were before, where we were headed. So. That's just my opinion.
Place to start from.
I'll research that up and present to the 23rd.
Okay. Tax base on the solar gardens to be placed on Highland Road?
So that is going to reflect on the 2020 tax statement. It'll be switching from agriculture to commercial. Since it hadn't taken place, it's not going to show in 2019, but will in 2020.
Is that the whole chunk of land out there, or is just like half of it?
Just that one little corner.
It's just like the northern half.
That little tight pyramid in the end.
Did they buy the whole thing?
I don't know if they bought or sold or rented it. There's no, I have no idea. I just wanted to make sure that we got it on the tax rolls properly.
So did the tax roll switch on the, like, how does that work for the part that they're running from the sea? The other solar garden?
It's exempt because it's the city owns it.
So I have a question about that, because I keep forgetting to ask Shane. Like, are they responsible for doing all the weeds that aren't around that fence? Inside it and outside of it? Who's responsible to do those?
I don't know if that was in the lease or not.
I'll look through that. So you want to know by the solar fields?
Every time I go out there and walk, I was going to ask him, and then I forget to bring it up when I'm here, and now that we're.
And if it is in the agreement, would you like me to send him a letter, ask him to take care of it?
Yeah, please.
And even if it's not, you want me to send him a letter, ask him to take care of it?
Try it, yeah.
Hopefully, they're not watching.
Okay, Lyon County Historical Society, request for support.
So we didn't, there was nothing in the budget currently, but what they're looking for is a commitment to donate, which would be in our next budget. So if you vote to put something in, then we can put it in the budget. Currently, the only thing in the budget donation-wise is Wheels Across Prairie Museum.
And the only comment I would make on that, even though it is the county one, I would not want to give any more to the counties than we do at Wheels Across Prairie.
Absolutely not.
And if, if it's even going to be even, I wouldn't even want to do that. Because I think the wheels is more important than the county, since it's only going to be a small portion of it that's devoted towards Tracy.
What are we giving wheels right now?
3,000.
Three? It should be like way less than half even.
So, but I mean, that's.
But they gave, their, their asking from us was between two and four, wasn't it?
Three and four.
Three and four?
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to see any more than two go to them, but that's me.
I would agree with that. I just didn't want to have them getting any more than our own museums getting, since the county already dumps, I shouldn't say dumps. The county already gives the Historical Society up in Marshall a nice sum of money every year to start with.
Right.
Do we want to vote on tonight how much we're going to?
I think they needed that because of their grant.
Yeah, we got to get the number as quick as I can.
Oh, I'd make a motion to give the Lyon County Historical Society $2,000 starting in next year's budget.
I'll second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Any new business?
Three things. As you just saw, I was just handed the Monroe contract that's signed. Note on it says that they will deliver a check to Chris on Friday. They have a meeting on Thursday night. Appears to be signed by them. I'm assuming we've approved all of the other township contracts already. I would ask that you consider this and approve this, so we can get it signed and get it implemented. Obviously, Friday. But if we could get it signed tonight, that would be great.
It's the full amount?
I believe so.
That's what they agreed with.
Okay.
I wasn't in the meeting that they had today, so I was asked not to be there. Next, oh, you wanted to handle that first.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we accept the contract with Monroe Township for the designated amount. Do I have to say the amount?
It's, that's the per-section rate, and that's the total.
Okay, for the $389 per-section rate for the period through April 30th of 2019.
I would second that.
First and second, any discussion?
The only thing I would say is it's not effective. You can sign it, but it's not in effect until the cash, the check is dropped off, so make it effective.
I guess my thought would be we all sign it tonight, and when they hand Chris the check on Friday.
Then he can handle it.
We'll already have it scanned in the server. We can give them their original copy back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Um, next item, while we're on rural contracts, I never thought I'd be coming here and saying this, but discussions I'd had with Shane prior to Chris starting, and some discussions I've had with Chris, this rural contract, and partly with some of the gaps in the system over the last few years, I guess I'm asking for permission to take the rural contracts back, which is technically my job as fire chief. By that, I will keep track of the numbers, obviously working with the administrator, turn in the forms that, on a timely basis, as to when they need to be sent out. They'll still be sent out from the city office, but I will facilitate keeping it all in order and providing all the documents.
Sticking with what we agreed on as far as the per-section rate over the next couple of years?
Correct, just overseeing.
I'd make a motion to do that to you. You can have it back.
Yeah, why would anybody go for that one? First and second, any discussion?
So any deviation from those numbers would have to come back through us?
Any deviation to the numbers would have to come back. I'm just looking for.
Being able to.
Any, any information that we decide we want to share, whether we decide to have a meeting, whatever would be stuff that I would facilitate. It'll now fall back on my plate to letters of intent when they go out, making sure the contracts go out, getting that information to the city, to the city office, so that it goes out. Also helps me more in the lines of keeping track of everything as well, too. I love it when she smiles like that.
Look out.
I'm totally, I mean, I'm totally in agreement with you taking it over and everything. My main concern is, is that we continue with the transparency and everything with the townships, so that they understand what the rate is based on, what they're getting for their money. I mean, when we had our meeting with, with the township, I think they brought up a few good, good points that they will, they don't have a say in what you're going to purchase or what you think is important for training, stuff like that. There's not a desire, well, I don't believe there's a desire, but it was made very clear that would not be part of it. But they just want more of a transparency to know, and this is where maybe it's going to be good if you take it over, because when you give them the contracts to maybe include it with a meeting, so that they can see what their money was spent on in the last year. And, you know, what, what they're getting, what bang they're getting for their buck. Does that make sense?
And historically, prior to the council taking it away from me, we had a meeting every year. First Thursday in December was slated. Every year, when I became fire chief, that was, that day was busy every year the rest of my life, or my less, my time as fire chief. We had a meeting at the fire station. The PowerPoint that all of you have seen was showed, a tour of the fire station, all the equipment that was purchased, all the grants that were there, all that was listed. To me, transparency was there prior to the council taking it over.
And it was.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what they were looking for. They weren't looking for, they didn't understand some situations, like how equipment was spent, you know, whether it was three trucks that turned into one truck. All they saw was the new truck. They didn't understand, you know, they didn't see the other ones leaving or going somewhere else. So they didn't understand the efficiency that, and that's what we explained to them today, the efficiency that you got by maximizing a purchase of a truck. They just saw a new truck. And that's because they didn't show up at the, since 2012. And that's where I think, and you're the best to explain that to them, so I think.
I mean, in all seriousness, if I, if I explain it to you guys, and you guys, everything I do is under the direction of you guys through Chris. So if you guys understand it and are for it, when I show it to them, if they have any questions, they should be able to come here and address you guys with them.
Right.
Transparency is along, as well along the line of, this is not Dale Johnson saying, "I'm going to charge you $400 and you $600," and this is something that the council, seven years ago, probably more than that now, decided they wanted to do. I would hope in this timeframe, and with all the things that have happened in the last three years, that everyone can agree that there was more transparency back then, and that's how we need to put it again. We need to put it back to, you know, whether it's having a meeting every year or having a meeting every other year, or, you know, I'm always available. If somebody wants to come ask questions, somebody wants to see something, the, there's people around the fire station, and there will be now for quite some time, almost on a daily basis. I mean, we're always willing to show people what we do and talk about what we do.
I think if you say you're going to have a meeting with them every year, when you're going to be giving them the new contracts and everything, I think that would make me feel better.
Well, the original.
You can be a little intimidating at times, Dale.
So can you, Jerry? But I'm going to also throw that back at you. If I'm going to have a meeting where I'm establishing, this is what we've done, because this is what I was approved to do by you guys, I would hope, almost request, that a number of you were present.
That was going to be my next thing, that we would be invited to the same meeting. I'm all for you taking it back, Dale. You're the most knowledgeable. I mean, me sitting there trying to explain fire department stuff is not great.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes, it's in the minutes, and now it's recorded on TV, too. But you are the one that, that needs to explain it to them. And you're the one that needs to develop that relationship with them again, with the understanding, you're not the one that's making all these decisions. You're the one presenting it to them.
I'm running, I'm running the fire department as a business, as a sub-business of the city. You guys are my boss. I mean, I'm not, nothing more than the manager of the fire department.
Did that get in the minutes?
Yep.
Only in this room.
Only when the council meeting is in session.
Okay. So I will, you made a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I will second that motion.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Last thing. There has been some, I was just made aware of it as, before I walked in the meeting. Obviously, there's a lot going on at the fire hall. There's a lot of equipment that's minorly damaged, some majorly damaged due to the events of the last week. We do have some signs on some vehicles that say "out of service." There were some people that saw fire trucks being pulled across town. We are, right now, still at 100%. We do have mutulating departments right now that are on, not quite auto aid, but will be dispatched immediately to come help us until we get this equipment fixed. The equipment is, everything that is broke is in the process of being fixed. Problem being, where we remotely live, getting some of the parts are difficult. Twofold, things are still breaking. Our annual hose test, which has absolutely nothing to do with last week, happened to fall today. My assistant chief was there to meet them to test all our hose per NFPA requirements, started up the rescue pumper, the big custom cab truck that we have, and he pulled it out on the pad, and it wasn't charging. Due to some water issues, we are having alternator issues. It's intermittent. We are still using it at this point in time, monitoring, obviously, the volt meter. Fortunately for us, the truck has an onboard generator, and we have a battery charger in the compartment, so we should be able to still make it work until we have, till we have help here. The parts are ordered, they are expedited to be here tomorrow morning, so. But as far as the rest of equipment, there, right now, all three of our pump trucks have issues. One of them has a fair, fairly large issue. We have a grass rig that is unoperable. The estimate to repair it is probably about what the truck's worth or real close to it. Just rest assured that the community is not lacking any level of service that we provide. And we are working diligently at getting everything repaired. He's going for the Santa look, but I can't grow away from it.
Well, I have something, and I don't know if it's, like, now's a good time to bring it up or if we were to bring it up, but Bob Burns called me from the mayor of Marshall just to let the city know, the fire, everybody know that if they can be of help in any way, they are more than willing to help.
that if they can be of help in any way, they are more than willing to help. So I just want to put that out there to everybody.
And every community around here has offered that, especially fire service, has offered that, that reach of, "We'll be here." Um, the night of the flood, just, uh, in, in, in the companies we work with, the company that does all the servicing and testing of our pumps saw pictures on Facebook of us pumping water out of ditches and stuff with fire trucks. They called up and sent two texts down on the 3rd of July at 8:00 at night to reservice, pull out, clean all the impellers and the pumps, and make sure that them, them trucks were approved for firefighting duties. So if we had a structured fire, we didn't send somebody in with a truck that had issue, that had, that had potential issues to where it could, you know, plug up, or be full of grass and fill a hose line to where we could damage or hurt a fireman. I mean, the, the amount of support we've had from all the people we work with and all the neighboring departments has been huge. And, I mean, that's what everybody does, they all work together to help out. So do I need a motion to just keep fixing things, or do we just keep going with what we're doing?
It's operational, we have to keep doing it.
Keep it operating, it's not a...
You'll just answer to us if you're over budget.
Okay, fourth thing.
I'm going to be over budget.
I'd like to let you know that I will be over budget. It's the first week of, second week of July, and I can tell you that there's going to be a few line items that will be over. Um, just motor fuels alone, one pump truck, um, pumped 96 gallons of fuel in one day. That was just one truck. And that doesn't include the tank that was on it when we started. So that's, that's one of the two trucks that ran pumping all day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dale. One other quick question. With that, um, are those expenses part of what we can turn in for potential...
Per the, per the mutual aid agreement that, um, you guys signed about a year ago, all of our expenses are technically billable to the party we provided service to, which is slightly different, because we provided a service back to the city of Tracy. But depending upon what realm this gets for reimbursable funds, um, on Sunday, when we had our guests at the fire hall, I did have this conversation with them. I know Jason and Chris have had numerous conversations with people that hopefully, on our, our life safety equipment, we're going to get a lot of reimbursement for that. Will it be 100%? No, but should it, should a majority of it come back? Yes.
The funding sources come from such diverse places, but they all want to wait and see if the other person's paying first.
Nobody wants to be first.
And there's, there's a hierarchy to it, so we are entering the beginning stage, which is our insurance, and we'll move progressively through those steps.
But for the time being, there's going to be some fairly large bills coming through. So...
Yay.
Thanks for having me.
All right, anything else?
Before you leave, I'd like to personally thank you and your people, and Shane, who's not here, and I guess it was Petey, for after putting in that long night Tuesday night to get out Wednesday morning, and put the flags up for the 4th. That was a nice touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Thanks.
With that, do we have any other business?
One other, uh, uh, community input I received tonight, the bike path, which didn't fare all that well with the flood and everything, but, um, the two issues were the gravel on it, so that the people are aware of it, they weren't complaining, just wanted somebody to know about it, and they were wondering when it was on the schedule again to be seal-coated and cracked sealed, and I said I'd check, so...
The new mower comes with a broom?
Yeah.
And, uh, I will talk to Shane about the seal coating, if he's got anything scheduled or, or potentially...
I can't remember when we did it last, I want to say, well, that was...
It's been a while.
Four or five years ago.
All the times I walked out there.
You should know.
I know, it's been a while.
It definitely needs the, the cracks. That's all I had.
Okay, anybody care to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?